Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 16th, 2019, Tingsboro School Committee Meeting here at Tingsboro High School. I'll remind everyone out here that the meeting is being audio and video recorded. At this time, we'll begin with interactions, starting to my left.
Robert Mullen.
Hello, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tarrell.
Ryan McMahon.
Paul Mitchell.
Becky Stanton.
Joe Messina, School Business Minister.
This time we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 2A, our first order of business, is the election of a Chair. So I'm requesting nominees for Chair. If more than one nominee is forthcoming, the nominee who receives the greatest number of votes will serve as the Chair. In the event of a tie, the process will repeat itself until a Chair is elected. So at this time, we're taking nomination for Chair.
Dr. Flanagan, I'd like to nominate Ryan McMahon as Chair.
We have a nomination.
Second?
We have a second. Any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries five, zero, one. With that, Mr. McMahon, congratulations. If you want to jump into the Chair's seat, I can turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, everybody. We will seek a nomination for a Vice Chair now. If nobody has one, I'd like to nominate Tony Tannarella as Vice Chair.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six, zero, zero. Seek a motion to elect a Recording Secretary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend, or nominate, Mr. Mitchell, if he is so willing.
Can you have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries six, zero, zero.
Why does everyone's eyes dark down to the table when that one comes on?
Sharon's gonna like that.
Yeah, Sharon's gonna love that.
Okay.
She's gonna nominate the new person for that one.
Items 2D, E, and F are open meeting law, executive session, enroll a school committee. This is all review material, it's in the drive, so please take a look at that and refresh yourselves on that. Dr. Flanagan, you want to take over?
Sure, item 2G, Subcommittee. So historically, what we've done for the Subcommittee is we've asked, and Mark, can you pull up item 2G so we can see?
Yeah.
What we've done is we've asked every school committee member to kind of prioritize their list, or send me a list of Subcommittees that you would like to serve on them, serve on for the school year. Some of them do require more time than others, some of them do require the Chair sit on them, Superintendent Eval and negotiations minimally. But we ask that you review this description page of, or summary page of the Subcommittee's available, and if you could send an email to Sharon with your list of choices, your top three choices, by August 15th, that'll give us time to compile the list, pull it together. I'll bring the list to the Chair, and at that point, some decisions can be made as to who will serve in which Subcommittee.
Sounds good.
Alright, so we'll follow the same process as last, just give us three Subcommittee you'd like, and we'll kind of put it together and see where the cards may fall.
And that list is in the folder for tonight's meeting?
It is, yes, 2G.
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
The, I know Town Hall is looking to have a Capital Asset Committee meeting prior to the town special election, or special town meeting. So I was wondering if we could do those nominations tonight, so that whoever is interested and wants to be on that board can go to that meeting and vote.
So it's entirely up to the Chair. One of the things that we did, I did tell Capital Asset, Justin, at Town Hall, was that the committee is in place until we're reeared. So it is you, and because Amy's no one around, Mike was the alternate, so Mike is the second.
Oh, okay.
Second committee member, and I did tell Mike Moran that he may be getting a call for that meeting.
Okay.
So as of far right now, you two are the voting members.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense, plus gives Becky a chance to review the list and not put the pressure on her right now.
So you're there for, until we do it.
Fine, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Excellent. Seek a motion to approve the June 4th, 2019, School Committee Executive Session Minutes and the July 2nd, 2019 Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes will not be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six, zero, zero.
Mr. Chair, if we could take item 10A out of order, would that be?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take item 10A out of order.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six, zero, zero.
At this time, if I could, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Messina to provide a little background, a little contextual knowledge as to our guests here from Whitson's, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We have Scott Berry, who is our District Manager with Whitson's, and Tracy DeMares, who is our Food Service Director locally here. They're here tonight just to give us a review of how we did this prior school year and have some talking points in terms of next year. So, next one, Scott, Tracy, come on up.
Mr. Chair, you know, we've been with Whitson's for how many years now?
We just finished year 11, right?
Year 11, it's been a great partnership and something that, you know, a longstanding partnership, and we're very pleased with the product and the service, and we're just welcoming them all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having us. So what we thought we'd do is really talk about the highlights, some of the highlights in our programs from this past year, and I'll have Tracy review some of the programs at all the school levels. We'll talk about the focus on what we're planning for next year, and then after that, I'll really talk about the financial review and, you know, budget process for this upcoming year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy.
We continue to mandate professional standards, mandated training based on USDA requirements. Welcome lunch at elementary school, offering pizza and fresh garden, salad and a variety of foods, and a visit from Mari the Monkey, that was for the kindergarten kids coming in for the new year. We continued our Flav's promotion at all schools and offered items such as the Kickin' Cases, quesadillas with a kick. It wraps with fun flavor combinations, also had holiday themed, such as turkey dinner for Thanksgiving, cherry jello with whipped topping for Valentine's Day, Red Sox opening day, we did a choice of hot dogs with fries, or loaded nachos with the chocolate chip cookie. At the elementary school, we continue to involve the students in decorating the cafe during each holiday, which creates much excitement. Continued programs such as Lucky Day Tray and Student Appreciation Day. New to the elementary this year was Luke the Lion, he's like, he's a friend of the elf of the shelf. So he comes and visits the kids for the month of December and gets them to try new fruits and veggies, and drink their milk with their meals, and the kids really like it. He was hanging out with, piggybacking on one of the staff members and everything, and the kids enjoyed it. We continue with Meatless Monday menu options at all grade levels. Through our Simply Rooted philosophy, we are committed to providing wholesome, high-quality menus prepared from fresh, clean, organic, non-GMO, all locally sourced ingredients whenever possible. At the middle school, we replaced the left side of the serving line with a new hot well and counters for our pizzas and hot sandwiches. At high school, we had an open-air merchandiser to expand offerings of grab-and-go salads, sandwiches, yogurt parfaits, and other à la carte options, and it kind of streamlined it, there's no milk coolers out there anymore. It's nice that kids can just go grab and go to the register and they're all set. For the upcoming year, we will work with all three schools to introduce a vertical garden, increase local products, organic and non-GMO products, decrease amount of processed foods, and focus on scratch cooking, increase the frequency of product samples, utilize our Harvest of the Month and Farm-to-School programs to offer unique items for the students to taste, improve communication and education through monthly newsletters, highlight program, and introduce lessons, lesson plans for each grade, and activity sheets for the elementary level. We'll continue with the Flav's promotions, National Food Holidays, and themed holidays promotion, work with the principals to establish focus groups at all levels, partner to find ways to distribute surveys and gather feedback more efficiently, promote use of the mobile app to access menus, nutritional information, and work with the PTO, partner with them maybe on open house events to meet, discuss, and review the overall program.
So our focus really for next year is, hopefully you're familiar with the Simply Rooted philosophy, and that's really getting away from processed foods. So we're really researching local vendors, local produce. We partner with mass farm-to-schools as we have in the past, we're working with the Mass Department of Defense, and we get an entitlement from them for fresh produce, fruits and veggies, as we have in the past couple of years. The non-GMO, organic items, where we keep researching and adding those to our menus, ironically, they're not a big favorite of kids. So I know it's an initiative of, you know, parents, community, and a part of our philosophy, we often get a lot of feedback that they don't like the taste and they don't want them. So that's kind of a little bit of a battle that we're facing. The other part of it is communication, and I think we talked about that last year, is really finding ways to reach out to the students, parents, and get more feedback. So we've launched, over the past several years, online surveys through mobile apps and so forth, we're not getting any feedback. We, this year, in a couple of districts, we piloted their survey kiosks, which we actually bring an iPad in a station to like the school cafeterias, and as the kids are eating lunch, they can go up to the iPad and take a quick, usually it's a four to five question survey. We've had some success with that, again, the challenge is the questions, we try to keep them simple in terms of what did you like and what didn't you like, but we don't really go any further. So we get a lot of, you know, I didn't like that, but we were trying to get more feedback in terms of why, and what else can we find, you know, that's suited for, and not just, you know, at every grade level, not just globally, but elementary and the secondary levels. So that's really, we've changed vendors, we were using Costa for the past, I think, 11 years since we've been here. We're now switching over to Cisco Boston. So we, we're hoping we have resources and access to more products and different products to create more variety with our menu on that side as well. And again, on the process side, you know, dealing with the government, we actually, year over year, we reduce the amount of processed items we take from the government, which is essentially free, and we put that entitlement money into brown box, and again, the DOD. So every year, the DOD gives us more funds for fresh fruits and vegetables, and we use that and use less money for the processed products, although, you know, some of the items, such as chicken nuggets and chicken patties are favorites, so we still maintain and offer those as well. In terms of financials, we had one less operating day than we had last year, and with that, our district return was $600 greater than prior year. So we're still operating at a surplus, which is great news. Our participation rates, based on levels, so the elementary school, we're averaging a 45% participation rate. Middle school is 53% participation, and the high school right now is 36. So I think the, one of the focuses, I think, is really the high school. We'd like to see the high school more in like a 42, you know, 40%, up to 43% participation. So again, you know, sampling promos, I think the communication and trying to get feedback, like what are we missing, is one of our focuses for, you know, this upcoming year. And then the other benchmark that we measure is obviously meals per labor hour, and, you know, according to the industry standard, we're right at where we need to be. So elementary, our meals per labor hour is 19.5, middle school is 16, and high school is 15. So we're right, we're right in the, along with the industry average there. So in terms of the budget for this coming year, we looked at the, as we do every year, the USDA Paid Lunch Equity Tool. They set target rates usually in August for the upcoming year. So the paid lunch equity for this fiscal year, the target is $3. Right now, Tingsboro is at $2.91, so we're about a dime below the paid equity rate. That in a combination with cost increases, so everyone knows about the minimum wage and that challenge we're facing. Minimum wage as of January goes up to $12.75 this coming year. So in order to, you know, be self-sustaining and not operating in a deficit, you know, we are, once again, you know, recommending a price increases, which is obviously up to the (inaudible). What we would propose, you know, is a 20 cent price increase for the elementary, would bring the lunch price to $3, and then 25 cents for secondary, which would bring the price to $3.25. That would be, that will enable us to maintain a surplus of around $4,200 for fiscal 1920.
So I think when, when Scott and I were discussing some of next year's budget lines, you know, we discussed the challenges. As Scott mentioned, we had one less serving day, that was our Distance Learning Day that we piloted last school year. This year, we're looking at two potentially distance learning days that, while counting for the students, we will lose another serving day in this year. We talked about 25 cents across the board, all schools. I didn't want to see the elementary at 3.05, that was just a number that, I told Scott, no, can we try to do it at 20 for the elementary, 25 for this campus? Scott did bring this to me, we had lots of great discussion about it. One thing I did want to mention that Tracy didn't bring up is at the elementary school, one of the other highlights I think we had during last school year is Tracy's crew at the elementary school partnered with our Special Education Department to give some kids that, part of their challenge was with eating foods and trying foods, and Tracy's crew over there was great in terms of getting some food in, you know, into the kids' hands and into the teachers' hands, to try new things, to open up some avenues for these kids. So it was something that just sort of went under the radar, but I was happy to see that, you know, it worked. And I heard from Brian Riley, who's the Special Ed facilitator over there, that it was great that we gave these kids some opportunities that they may not have had just in a normal cafeteria setting.
When's the last time we had a increase?
Two, at least two, if not three years ago.
How much was it then, do you remember?
I don't.
Probably 10 cents.
Yeah.
I think we went up slightly larger last year on this campus.
Probably wasn't more than 20.
No, no.
Between 10 and 20 cents?
And again, it's the challenges of, as Scott mentioned, the minimum wage, minimum wage law has increased. You know, each of the last three years is going up again in January, and when you're, when you're bringing in new workers at that minimum wage level, your seasoned workers have to, you know,
Go up also?
You know, respectfully have to increase them a little bit, some of the challenges we face with our rates.
So on your special days of serving, do you get better participation?
It depends on what it is, so, I mean, and that's, we've experienced that as well. So we, Whitson's has put together what they call an Innovation Committee, and it's spearheaded by a Nutrition and Marketing Department out of our corporate offices. And what they've done is, historically, they would really hand us specials and promotions and tell us, this is what you're going to do. They've kind of restructured, and now they're, they're asking us for input based on, you know, experience and what the, you know, what the ADP has been when we do the promotions. So if we do promotions that have no impact, we're looking to replace those with something new and different. So it really, you know, the visiting chef at the elementary level, you know, clearly raises participation, the kids get excited and want to come. At secondary levels, really not that excited, they're more interested in the food. So, you know, the other thing that we're doing is on the technology side, where we have, we do have mobile apps, you know, on the phones. So there's apps to get our menu nutritionals, we're looking to revamp that to the point where, you know, students with special diets or dietary restrictions, parents can set up profiles on their mobile app, it'll tell them, you know, really what the child can eat that day instead of doing a lot of the legwork. So we're, we're looking at that at the back end to see if that helps and, you know, informs parents, you know, you know, your child still can eat, these are your options. Because I think sometimes they're thinking that we can't accommodate, you know, all the restrictions if there are special requests. So we're, we're looking at things on the back end to try to, you know, maintain and increase participation as well.
Well, I guess my question would be, do promotions normally on the holidays, like Thanksgiving, Christmas, do you try and do something once a month, or just to try and get participation on the pizza days, or pizza on Fridays, or whatever?
You know, the plan is a once a month, you know, is a once a month promotion, and we do things like, you know, it could be a food holiday, obviously, like a Thanksgiving or Christmas, but we do, you know, we do smoothies, ramen noodles. We have a waffle promotion now, which is, it's actually pressed sandwiches using a homemade Belgian waffle, which is going to be new this year, and that's part of the Innovation Committee as well. So we've done sushi in some districts, you know, non-fish due to allergies, but, so those types of things, we're always looking to do, you know, different options.
What about some type of energy snack or something for the students that are participating in athletics after school?
We can look, I mean, the snack program, we, is very restrictive only because of the USDA guidelines. If it's during, you know, if it's after the school hours, you know, we could offer different items. If it's during the school hours, it's very limited, we have to follow the John Stocker A-list. You know, the calorie intake has to be under 200, no trans fats, it's very limited in terms of what we can offer.
That might be an area that could be, you know, something where, once the bell rings at 2 o'clock, students are going to play soccer, field hockey, or whatever, and they might
On a bus ride.
Have a snack available for them to pick up.
Yeah, and we have done, we piloted, you know, really an after-school snack program out of my 13 districts. We've done it in two, and one was successful, one was not, and I think it depends on where their students are and where the activities are. So obviously, you know, the nice weather, if they're outside, it doesn't help us at all, because they're not, but if it's like indoor activities, you know, it's not a great revenue source, but it helps us, so.
Like you said, when they go to away games, even having a sandwich on the bus for after the game, it's something that, you know, they could make it a order-type service where it's, you know, you don't have to wait around for somebody to order it, everybody just orders in the day before and says, I, you know, we'll make a roast beef sandwich.
Yeah, certainly an option.
Increase revenues a little bit.
You have any questions?
You mentioned that only 36% of the high school students participate, is that normal in your other districts? Or is it low? It just seems low to me.
What I usually see is 40, 40 to 42, so it's really not that far off. I know this year as well, one of the factors, and I know Joe's aware, is we had major challenges with staffing issues. So I think during a three-month period, we were down three or four team members, and we know that that affected speed of service, I mean, we did our best, you know, trying to spread staff to make sure all services, there was no impact to the students, but I'm sure, you know, I'm sure ultimately, it probably did have a little bit of impact, so that number is reflective of that factor as well.
Seek a motion to increase the price to $3 at TES and $3.25 at TMS and THS.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Carries six, zero, zero.
Mr. Chair, while we're into doing motions, it would be very helpful if I could have a motion to approve next operating year with Whitson's. So it would be a motion to exercise your First Amendment of Four on the Whitson's agreement, and just to authorize the Chair to sign the contract.
I'll seek that motion.
I'll make the motion to take advantage of the
First Amendment of Four.
First option of renewing Whitson's contract for one more year.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six, zero, zero.
And just for, in historical reason, we do that, is Department of Education only allows us to do one-year contracts. We can, we can exercise four different one-year amendments for a five-year contract, which, as cumbersome as that is for us, it's the way Desi likes us to do it, so.
That was fine for me, Paul might struggle a little bit.
I'm old, dude.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good luck next year.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll pick back up with item four, correspondence.
Mr. Chair, three items of correspondence, just to share with the committee tonight. The one, just for the committee's knowledge, I recently received an email that I was fortunate enough to be elected President of the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association. So that is a regional group that meets regularly, it represents 29 school districts in the area. So I will have some additional responsibilities with that, none that will impact my work here in Tingsboro. But it's a good opportunity to be a little bit more visible in the state and not really understand what's going on in other districts as well, so I'm pretty excited about that. So I just wanted to share that news with the committee. The second piece of correspondence, I've received information from MAS S and MAS C regarding the joint conference. I know a couple of members have gone in the past, I don't know what schedules look like this year, but on November 6th through 9th is the conference. I'm going to email this directly to all members of the committee, so you have this information. Generally, we send one person as a delegate to the MAS C that actually votes on behalf of the town of Tingsboro, and we send an alternate as well. Historically, it varies, districts can send up to five or seven members. So if anyone in this committee is interested in attending this joint conference, it's educational, it's informative, I don't know if anyone has been, wants to speak to it, but I think it's a worthy conference and something that, it's an opportunity for you to meet other school committees, see what's going on in the districts. Sometimes it makes us feel good about what's going on here. So it's an opportunity to get out there and really see what's going on at the state level. So I have that information, I will share that, and I think, you know, if we want to book that or get information to Sharon by, you know, the next meeting in August, where we can kind of reach out and start making, registering some members. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Julie would be perfect for it, because it was her last year this past year, her first year.
First year.
Sorry, first year this past year.
Yeah, I thought it was amazing, I learned so much, and
In any year, is they do have some great courses for districts going into a new building program, and the selection process for a construction company, a design company, and how to manage that process. I took that class a couple of years ago, and I got a lot out of it, and I thought it was definitely worth going into it. And then, of course, just finances, being able to better understand the finances for a school district, how the, how the funding works, where it comes from, what the regulations are to spending on that. And like, as Superintendent said, you know, getting to meet your other counterparts from other districts, you definitely hear some really scary stories sometimes, but excellent stories too, and how you might be able, how, you know, we could do things better some ways, or how we can share the way we do things with them as well.
So as I said, I'll put that information out tomorrow through an email to all of you, and just let us know if you're interested in going. Now, if you go, you don't have to go all three days, correct? Nope. Pickings, yep.
Yep.
I've typically, the last three years, I've gone Wednesday, I've stayed Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday night. I did actually already send a email off to Sharon saying that I did want to go and do this again this year, because there's still a lot of some very good classes that I haven't had an opportunity to take. I would like to, I'd probably only get down for one or two nights this year. I know Julie got a lot staying, staying, did you stay all three nights or just two nights?
No, I think just two nights, yeah.
Thursday and Friday night, and you stayed for Saturday's classes?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So when the full program comes out, I can send that out as well, maybe that'll help you make some determinations about picking and choosing a night, but that information will be forthcoming. The last piece of correspondence that I'll just jump into The last piece of correspondence that I'll just jump into briefly is, I don't know if you had the opportunity to watch the, um, Board of Select meeting last night, but the School Building Committee, which we need to get to MSBA by August second, uh, was, uh, assigned last night by the, um, Board of Selectmen, and we have three members on this committee that'll serve on that, Committee Becky, Paul, and Tony. Um, Paul, you're in there as a community member, given the fact that in, if you don't run again-
Yep.
-which I believe you're, you're intimated, um, we didn't want you to lose your seat, so we didn't assign three school communities, we assigned two school committee positions and a community member position to that, um, which limited the number of participat- participat- participants we could have on it, given the fact that we couldn't have a quorum. And it was determined last night, um, also that Hillary and Tony will serve as co-chairs of that School Building Committee. Um, so that's where that is. Justin Sulzbeck will be on the committee, Matt Hansen, Hillary Winestrom, Becky Stanton, Tony Timorella, myself, Manny Pina, uh, Chris Pollitt, Mark Branko, Bert Bushman, Amy Pizerski, Paul Mitchell, Todd Goodrich, Karen Kavanaugh, and Joe Messina for the committee, so, uh, certainly a lot of school-friendly people on that committee as well, or people with history of, uh, attachments to the school, so, uh, so that's where we are in terms of correspondence for the School Building Committee.
Excellent. Any visitors, comments, and questions? I see none. Uh, she had a success. I think KJ's taking the summer off.
Good for him.
Catch up with him in September. So, committee update, superintendent evaluation.
As the, uh, Chair of that committee, I will speak to it. Um, we did finish Dr. Flanagan's, um, evaluation, which he received an exemplary, um, for his overall performance over the course of the last, uh, year with everything he's done, um, so we'd like to thank him for that. Um, all seven members of the school committee, uh, reviewed him, and, uh, we took the majority of the votes on each topic, and, uh, Dr. Flanagan did very, very well. So, the committee met with him two weeks ago, gave him his final review. Uh, we did vote in executive session to, um, give him an additional two years on his contract, so he signed a new five-year contract with Dr. Flanagan, um, which includes his, um, increases and, uh, a new bonus plan. We also, uh, voted in a new, um, development section into his, uh, professional development into the contract. Um, but we'd like to thank Dr. Flanagan for the great work he's done, um, over the course of the last year or the last couple of years, um, with the budget, with the, uh, MSBA project, um, with all the things we've had going on here at Tinsboro Public Schools between the, the roof project, the boiler project at the middle school, the, um, just everything. So, it's been a busy year, busy couple of years, uh, he's done a great job with his staff, with, uh, Principal Ogden and, and Mr. Pollitt, 'cause he came into the position and had to fill a bunch of positions, so, we appreciate everything you do for Tinsboro Public Schools, and, uh, we look forward to the next five years, so, thank you.
Well, just, you know, to respond, I really appreciate, um, the, the, the feedback was, was, was great, I really do appreciate it. Um, you know, and I've, I've said all along, and I'll continue to say, I don't do any of this by myself, we have a phenomenal team in central office, we have a phenomenal admin team throughout the district, we have phenomenal teachers throughout the district, and support staff throughout the district, um, and I fully and fundamentally believe there's not one person that comes to work at the Tinsboro Public Schools that doesn't put kids first, and if you don't put kids first, uh, frankly, we don't want you on this district, uh, because that's what it's all about at the end of the day. Uh, making connections with our kids and teaching and learning, so, uh, so very proud when I go out and represent Tinsboro to say that, you know, I'm the Superintendent of Tinsboro Public Schools, and let me tell you about our place. Um, so, so thank you for the support of the committee, I really do appreciate it, and I know that you have to read that stuff into later,
Yes.
formally and officially, but-
I'm looking forward to it. That sounded sarcastic.
All right. Very well done, good job.
Thank you.
Item eight, personnel. I'm gonna, uh, try something new, Tony never liked to do, I'm gonna actually try to read the names. We'll see how this goes.
Good luck.
Uh, eight A, notification of appointments, uh, Hannah Stones, TMS PE teacher, Tyler Hurley, TES second shift custodian, Will Barber, THS one-point-oh chemistry teacher, have all been appointed. Staff attending professional status as a fiscal year twenty, Elizabeth Adams, Rob Odette, Leah Marullo, Christina Rapucci, Kelly St. Jellet, and Jennifer Wall. Staff renewal is with non-professional status that are coming back, Deb Anderson, Colleen Botter, Gianna Bensia, Maggie Gothier, Kristen Erickson, Sarah Eisenberger, Karen Lorschell, Zach Richall, Samantha Rosa, Melissa Roggeri, Danielle Semantelli, Andrea Schwartzianitis, Jen Spanos, Melissa Sullivan, and Kate Wells. Notifications of resignations, Chris Vandell, THS math teacher, and Anne Marie Roy, the media teacher, will be resigning. Notification of non-renewal, Tanya Arnt. Notification of intent to retire, Sherry Corcoran, with twenty-plus years in the district, congratulations to her, good luck in retirement. Notification, notification of request for one-year leave of absence, Leah Messier, TES occupational therapist. Did that went well?
Well done, Mr. Chair.
Those were easy.
Uh, item nine A, TES culvert update. You want to begin?
Sure, so, um, so the, the culvert project is happening, and it's, it's happening in about three weeks. This is the culvert project that we've talked about for the past six years.
Heard that before.
Um, so, so it's happening, uh, this summer, I just, uh, in a conversation with Justin, Justin Sulzbeck's been, uh, outstanding working with Manny in terms of, uh, communication on this. It is scheduled for the second week in August. The construction company reached out to us and said, if they were to open the entire road and shut down the road and, and force us to use the access road, the project would go twice as quickly. So I said, let's try that for the first week, let's see if we can get this done, which I believe we will. So DPW and the Highway Department have already cleared the access road at, um, at the elementary school, so any staff that needs to access the school will use the access road, uh, just so we can make sure that this culvert's done in a timely manner and that the road is closed up, sealed, and finished before buses, uh, begin to roll. So, um, that is happening second week in August, um, and we believe it's gonna be about, about a four or five-day job, so that's great.
Has anybody notified any of the people using the fields?
We'll do that once it gets closer to the time.
I would recommend that-
I don't wanna do it now in the event that something pushes us all around another year.
The other thing, make sure that there's Jersey batteries there, 'cause someone's gonna drive down that road in the middle of the dark.
Right, right. That's a good, that's a good point. Um, so that's where we are in terms of the culvert update, so it looks like it, it's going to happen. I'm gonna be optimistic, it's happening.
I believe it.
All right.
Item B, summer projects update.
Summer project update, so we've had, we have a lot going on. Manny Pina has been, uh, extremely busy this summer. Uh, the phone system, Derek Piper, uh, led this, uh, initiative, the phone system at the high school, middle school, and central office is in, that was done last week. Um, that was a capital asset grant, so that's already completed, that's a good thing. The fire panel, uh, man, fire alarms is coming out next week, as we know, we received that, funding through capital asset as well. It's about a forty-eight thousand dollar job, that'll be done next week, and again, that's not a, uh, an extensive project, that's a, a several-day project, um, but it's certainly warranted and much needed. The TES roof, we are unfortunately still waiting on the design from, uh, the architectural firm. As you know, because this project cost over fifty thousand dollars, we had to have, not municipal finance, we had to have a, a, a design for it. So the design was approximately, was high twenty thousands to, to get LaValle Benzinga to go out and, and do this. Once that design service comes back, then we can look at when this project's gonna take place. Right now, I'm not optimistic that we're gonna be on time for the summer, which is unfortunate. Um, but, again, eh, you know, as soon as the cap, as soon as approved at town meeting in May, we solicited, uh, design bids, and by the time it works, the, the timing just didn't work out for the summer, so, you did talk about efficiency costs next year, if it is the same company that goes up at one time, there may be some savings there in the long run. I don't know, um, but we need to see what that design service looks like, and again, that's to replace the shingle section of the elementary school roof, uh, that are just failing at this point.
Does-
Go ahead.
Does not having the roof done impact the schools and any rooms they're able to use?
Able to use, no. Does it impact in terms of leaking and patching? Yes. Yes, it'll be another year of patching.
It can't be done during the year at all.
I don't think so. I, 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 I can't imagine you could strip a roof and, and-
No.
I just think it's too big of a job. Um, certainly I'll explore it, but, uh, but I'm not optimistic that that's a, a reality. Um, so that's the unfortunate news there. If we go down to D, we have some fortunate news, um, in that Manny was able to find a company that believes they can repair our track at a nominal cost. They believe they can come in and patch that track for eleven thousand dollars and dress that up and make that look great. And they believe that the patching they put on that is something that will last three to five years. So eleven thousand dollars and a twenty million dollar budget is an exorbitant cost, and it's worth trying, um, to see if this patching will work for the benefit of our track programs and our fall athletes. So working with Manny, um, we're, we're gonna go ahead and spend that money, um, to, to see what we can do to make that track as, as useful as possible for the next three to five years. I think it's, I think it's a, a good move for our kids.
One question on projects, the Lakeview School, how is that? I know it's, we're not-
Right, so that, eh, the, the HVAC components go great. Um, right now, we're waiting on, on windows. Um, so what they've done is they've abated all the asbestos from the window trims. What the, what's gonna end up happening is if the windows don't come in in time, they're going to have to put temporary windows in place or, or plywood in place until they can do it, and they'll, they'll swap the windows on the second shift. So they've abated all the asbestos, they'll keep the windows in there, but it'll probably end up being a second shift job at Lakeview, uh, by the window install team. And again, in speaking with that contractor, he said, this is, this is a ten-day job, this is not a month-long job, this is not a huge project. Uh, getting the abatement done was the big thing. He said, so for his crew to come in at night, second shift, or on the weekends, they can, they can knock it out pretty quickly.
I know all the windows are boarded up over there, so-
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if they took the windows out or not.
So I think it's part of the abatement process, um, but in terms of the HVAC, all the units are on-site, all the structural work is pretty much done, so it's a matter of mounting units, the inside's flying, HVAC's flying, so that, that will definitely hit the timeline, it's just a matter of the windows. And all that is, is waiting, the, the shops took a long time to come out, so it's a matter of waiting for the manufacturing of the windows, so that's where we are there.
Does that impact the budget a lot, making a second shift job?
Not at all. It's on them.
Oh, it's on them, okay.
Yeah, it's on them. The, the, the number's the number, so, yeah. So that's good. Um, and that's where we are in terms of updates for the summer.
Do, do we have an update on the solar panels, on when those might actually work?
They work. Yeah, they work. They work if we can turn them on. Um, the la, I was just, uh, talking to Mr. Mitchell about this before the meeting, um, I haven't heard any substantial news in terms of National Grid, um, giving everybody the, the go-ahead. The last correspondence I was copied on was a request for a picture of the meter and the fact that it said smart meter and some other language that, um, the state wants, um, surrounding the meter, so that was probably about three days ago. So, um, we have nothing at this point in terms of when we hope we can flip the switch.
I also told Mr. Messina, get some contacts at National Grid, uh, try to reach out and see if there's anything else that they know. I don't know, are you getting good communication from the contractor?
Um, yeah, summertime, it, it gets a little quiet out there, 'cause I think, like most of us, they're trying to squeeze in some time away, so, um, but right up until, you know, right about when school got out, um, Select Energy had reached out to me, um, just as a- Yeah, we're still, and they, and they are as anxious as we are to get those things up and running, 'cause they're not getting anything on their investment at this point. Um, basically, how they get paid back for purchasing all of the panels that are up there is by us paying for the electricity that it generates. So as long as those things are off, does them no good either, so they're very anxious to get them up and running as well.
How long have we been waiting on National Grid?
They, well, first we were waiting on the state, because the state put a hold on all of the projects. Um, once the project got approved by the state, they had made some changes on the metering and what needed to be done inside the engine room, so, Select had to come back out and basically do some retrofitting of the, the equipment we had ready to go, um, just to satisfy what the state was now looking at, and again, um, looks like the state's coming back saying, we want particular language, and we wanna see a picture of it before we're gonna go to the, the next step, and it almost seems like we're climbing a flight of stairs one step at a time, and the state comes back and says, oh, we gotta do this to get up to the next step, and hopefully we'll get to the roof. What's that?
So it's the state holding us back.
Um, it's National Grid at this point that, um, working with the state, that the state continues to s-
The state requirements that National Grid has to, um, enforce or do. So National Grid puts a meter in, they make sure all the connections to the grid are all set and all that sort of stuff, and then the, from what I understand, the project I'm working on, it's National Grid who makes the final decision to throw the switch. But they have to follow the state guidelines, and the guidelines just came out, it's a new, uh, program, the guidelines just came out, I think, in June, and started these programs up again, so that's why it's all-
It's like hitting a moving target sometime out there.
Checking the boxes as we go.
Yep, so.
Item nine C, Superintendent Evaluation. We'll read Dr. Flanagan's evaluation into the record. So this is Dr. Flanagan's evaluation for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, as submitted by the Tinsboro School Committee. Step one, assessment of progress toward performance goals. His district improvement goal, digital literacy and computer science, he received significant progress. Student learning goal, using data to drive instructional practices, Dr. Flanagan exceeded. Professional practice goal, new per, new superintendent induction program exceeded. Step two, assessment of performance on DESI standards. Standard one, instructional leadership, rating of proficient. Standard two, management and operations, rating exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement, rating proficient. Standard four, professional culture, rating exemplary. Step three, his overall summative performance, Dr. Flanagan received an exemplary rating for the school year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll seek a motion to, where am I? To support Dr. Flanagan's new five-year contract.
What about it?
Yeah, where am I?
Nine C?
Nine C.
Oh, there we go, sorry.
Boy, you're more and more like me every day.
I know, you're bad influence. I'll seek a motion to accept Dr. Flanagan's twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen performance evaluation.
I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six zero zero. Now, D, Superintendent Contract. As we stated earlier, we negotiated a new five-year deal with Dr. Flanagan, so this time we'll seek a motion to support Dr. Flanagan's new five-year contract.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six zero zero. New business.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, we took care of ten A, ten B, executive session minutes.
Mr. Chair, we're just looking for, uh, the approval to send the minutes out to Attorney Long for review to make sure that we, uh, dot I's and cross T's before we release them publicly.
I will seek a motion to send the executive session meeting minutes to Attorney Long's office to review.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six zero zero.
Point of clarification, that's what we do, we, we send them out to the attorney's office, executive session, so it's just an annual thing, housekeeping issue.
Finance. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, signing of bills, um, normally it would be a nice, easy process, but since it's been a while since our last meeting, and it's gonna be a little, little more complicated, um, tonight there are some bill warrants, uh, floating around the table. Uh, there are six bill warrants from fiscal nineteen, uh, that are dated June thirtieth for signature tonight. Uh, again, all of these, uh, warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. Um, also tonight, there were three FY twenty bill warrants, uh, for your signature. Um, in terms of the single signer coming in and signing bills- In terms of the single signer coming in and signing bills, Mr. Mullin, as single signer, came in on July 1st, and he signed one FY '20 warrant, as well as nine FY '19 warrants dated June 30th on that date. Also, on June 17th, Mr. Mullin, as the single signer, came in and signed 10 warrants for the committee on that date. For signing of payroll, there are actually two documents in the drive. One is the first FY '20 payroll dated July 8th, and as well as the final June FY '19 payrolls. There are four of them, and again, those warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts are in your drive. Also in your drive is the May 2019 financial packet, those three reports, as well as the June 2019 enrollment that I will leave for the chair.
Okay, enrollment as of June 1st, 2019, TES had 818 students, TMS 366, THS 478, out of district, 25, for a total of 1,687 students.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Have we seen a rise in enrollment at the elementary school as a result of the full-time daycare, or full-time kindergarten?
Registrations?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Well, we went up a classroom from six to seven in preparation for it, and we're seeing, Principal Kavanaugh this morning, significant increase in enrollment, which is great. And just, just another point of information from the committee, there's also legislation before, there's an article before legislation, legislator is right now, that would require full-day kindergarten in Massachusetts, possible free full-day kindergarten. So, it looks like it could be coming, could be coming along anyway, so we're actually a step ahead of it, which is great, and we did an article in a strategic, thoughtful way, so that works out.
And what about the transition from eighth to ninth grade? Are we retaining eighth graders, or?
Generally, yes. We, it's, the number, that number hasn't changed, and it seems to be about 20 a year.
Twenty, twenty-five.
About 20, 25 a year, that we leave to grade a low, Bishop Gerton, low Catholic, or private schools, Groton School, or whatever, it seems to be a pretty consistent number there, you know? And one of the things we've seen decline in is our students leaving us to go to innovation from fourth and fifth grade. So, kids are staying at Tinsborough Public Schools, which we're happy about.
School committee discussion. Mr. Rybanks?
All set, thank you.
All set, thank you.
Just a couple things. First, congratulations to Dr. Flanagan on becoming the president, I guess, title, as a superintendent, as such, the best big owner, that's great.
Thanks.
And then, number two, also thanks to Dr. Flanagan for his due diligence and getting some work done with the chair.
Thank Manny on that, Manny did work hard for it, so I appreciate it.
They thank Manny for it.
I'll thank him for it, yeah, definitely. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge the fact that we have a lot of teachers working hard on behalf of our district and our students, and our curriculum missions over the summer. We have a very large team of social studies teachers, K to 12, who have been working in a interdisciplinary and collegiate way with other districts across the state, to keep up with the new changes in social studies. They've already gone out for one session this summer, they'll go out for a second one, and today, and again tomorrow, a math task force, which is a representative team of teachers at the elementary school, have been meeting with Dr. Kreisberg, our consultant from Leslie University, who we're in a contract with, to take a look at all of our math manipulators, our math curriculum materials, and to talk about instructional practices. So, that's just two quick commercials for a lot, a lot, a lot of coursework, professional development, reading, and training that takes place over the summer that we support in-house or outside of the district. So, you know, we're out there rejuvenating and relaxing, so to speak, but there's a ton of people doing a lot of work to get ready for our kids when they come back at the end of August. So, thank you to the teachers for doing all that work, and we're excited to see what happens in September.
Mr. Messina?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
I just want to thank Dr. Flanagan for choosing to serve our community and signing on for an extension on the contract. I think it's the continuity that you've provided our school system between being a teacher and then an administrator, and now superintendent, it's really important to our school system. It's part of the reason, among many other reasons, but part of the reason that, you know, I choose to live in this community, so thank you.
Thank you.
I want to also congratulate you and thank you for the work that you've done, you and your staff have really brought it up. Just need to continue to do that for all our students, from the special needs to the high achievers, and the kids on the tennis team, to the kids in the theater program. It's all, all, everybody's involved, and I appreciate that attitude.
Thank you.
I'll echo their comments, and also congratulate Ryan on the new chair position. Good luck, brother.
It probably just. That just seems genuine at all. Before I turn to the chair, just one comment. You know, so, Mark made a great point, I think the summer is the best time that we all learn. Mark and I had the opportunity last week to be at the cave, and we saw, I say the best keynote I've ever seen in my life at the cave last week, and it was just something that really invigorates you, it opens your eyes a little bit. But one of the things that I know that this committee was looking for, and began to lay the foundation for a conversation about that, is, you know, I think the committee wanted some training in terms of evaluation for the school committee, in terms of the superintendent and how that works. I will say, there's a new rubric being piloted, because right now, I know across the Commonwealth, not everyone's happy with the, the rubric itself, but even the position of school committees evaluating superintendents, and what more can be done, and how can we educate you. So, I didn't know if the chair or the committee would like us to look to get some kind of training for our committee on the evaluation and/or anything else that's out there. We talk about learning, we talk about PD for us, you know, we want to make PD available for you as well. So, if there's something that you would like to see, certainly we have the contacts, we have the resources, and we can say, let's get a two-hour seminar on this or that, so we can all kind of grow as a group. Because ultimately, we work for you, and you need to keep driving this bus and keep the taxpayers happy, and make sure that we, I don't want to come for our kids. So, if there's something that the committee wants to reach out to you, send you an email, Ryan, you get to me, we can kind of structure some kind of training, so that we can go forward, and everyone has the opportunity to learn and grow.
That'd be awesome. I think the superintendent evaluation training is something that we would all benefit from, for sure.
Yeah, so I heard that. So, let's, let me work with some consultants and get somebody in here, who can give us some knowledge and direction. And I think that's a common, I think that's a common issue statewide, which is why we're looking at the rubrics, which is why different things are being piloted. So, it's funky, because you're not in the schools every day, so it's not easy for you to see what goes on. So, let me work on that.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you for electing me chair, got some big shoes to fill, I'll do my best. Congratulations, Dr. Flanagan, on being elected president, congratulations on your review and another great year. And I'm really excited to see the school building committee get going, so thank you, Paul, Becky, Tony, for the work you'll be doing on that. Really looking forward to see what comes out of that. That's all I have.
We do not have a need for executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Great. Any discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Aye.
Close? Okay, six zero zero, we adjourned.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.